We good? All right, call the work session to order. First item on the agenda is discussion of utility projects financing.
That is me to start with anyway, you have a memo in your packet, brief memo. As noted in that staff report, tonight's discussion of the combined water and wastewater systems fund is a beginning point for significant ongoing conversations anticipated regarding upcoming investment in our utility infrastructure. As you know, the water master plan was completed in 2018 and the wastewater master plan followed in 2021. These plans identify significant needs and facility and maintenance investment in our utility system. The plans guide development of the CIP, but growth patterns and funding availability will affect the ultimate timing of projects. We have for some time in quarterly financial updates discussed the fact that as we implement these plans, we'll have cash flow concerns and we've pushed those cap, we've been talking about debt issuance for a number of years and we've talked about those cash flow concerns. Throughout those discussions, we've anticipated debt financing using certificates of participation. We've been able to push the timing of that debt issuance due to timelines, project changes, and securing additional funds from other sources. Staffing issues last year caused us to review other options for our utilities, including privatization. At Board Direction, the city is no longer pursuing privatization as an alternative, so we're back to looking at our long-term plan for our utilities. This evening Chuck will highlight and answer any questions you may have about the projects included in the water and wastewater master plans and that are incorporated into the CIP and longer-range planning. We've discussed all of these projects at various times over the last several years. We've seen it as part of the budget process and we've discussed as part of the CIP. But we want to review that again kind of as a comprehensive basis for you all looking at the next several years, not just the next five years covered in the CIP, but we've got an eight to 10-year plan that covers $70 million in investment in our system. Rick will then walk us through the financial information related to cash flow and the need for debt financing. Todd Goffey and Megan Miller, Todd with Piper Jaffrey, our financial advisor, and Megan Miller, our bond counsel, are here to provide information on financing alternatives. Todd has a presentation he'll provide and Megan will answer any questions that we might have with regard to timing or the debt financing of our utility needs. So this evening, we really want to answer your questions about our utilities, the utility projects, financing alternatives, and we're going to be seeking your direction regarding the financing strategy that we've developed and that Rick will talk about. Over the course of the next several months, through the budget process, we will have a number of items for review with you all on the work session. That includes a review of historical expenditures and rate increases on the utility fund side. Well, also last summer during the board retreat, Jack presented information to you all on our growth capacity issues based on our system. We'll be providing updates to that. We'll talk through the rate model and we'll talk about fee structures. So there will be significant discussion moving forward as we plan for the future of our utilities. So this is our first night to have those discussions. So we'll take the direction from you this evening to develop a plan to implement the strategy and bring it back for Board for additional discussion. So I'll turn it over to Chuck to talk about projects.
Good evening. Frightening face. Back this up. Cynthia mentioned, these are the projects that we've identified in the water and wastewater master plans over the last few years. They address the growing needs of a community and an aging infrastructure. This is a plan, these are estimated costs. These projects move, the schedules move, costs increase. Timing of some of the larger plant projects will obviously depend on the community growth and staff is currently seeking funding opportunities with grants, low interest loans, cost-sharing opportunities, wherever we can find a dollar, we look. So in the interest of time, I'm not going to spend a lot of time in getting into great detail on all these projects. We've gone over a lot of them, but if you have any specific questions about any of the needs for these projects or the scope of these projects, let's discuss it further. Our big project that we just bid this afternoon, we have some good news. They came in, well Rick would say at budget, but I would say under the estimate. They came in very good, we had bids on 144th Street Lift Station and came in, the bid came in at 3.4 million. And we do have some more expenses with Evergy and we'll probably have some contingency costs, but we'll bring that back in an award resolution to the Board, for the Board's consideration in March. We are getting a million five from, I guess it was Representative Graves' office, the Corps administering it. So we've had a little bit of, it's been a year to get that agreement with the Corps completed and now we're doing the environmental assessment, public comment period. So by the 18th, March 18th, we'll be able to bring that to you for an award.
And Chuck, I'm going to interrupt, Linda, would you pull up the spreadsheet? Thank you.
Oh, yeah. And Chuck, real quick while she pulling that up, when were these estimates updated that we have in front of us?
Rick and I work on them on a continual basis.
Okay. So they're recent, I guess is my question, right? They're pretty recent. Okay.
Again, they're estimates and until we, you know, these projects are so substantial and prices have changed tremendously and, you know, we got to get away from, everything's changed since COVID. Well, that's the new norm, but we're still catching up because we had arranged today, we, what was our hybrid? Five-eight? Five-eight was one of the bids and this one was three-four. So there's still a wide range out there, equipment, materials, just skyrocketing. And we're grateful when we get some good bids like that. So we had five bidders, so we had good competition. But this one was by far low, lower than all of them by far, so.
Okay, thank you.
And I might, I think Chuck has mentioned this, but I want to reiterate also, that column with the costs, those are net costs to the combined water and wastewater system. So it is total cost to the city, that is not total project cost. Anything that we're getting on grant funding or other ways we're leveraging funding are not reflected. This is the cost to the combined water and wastewater fund that we'll have to fund. Basically, bottom line is through rate payers.
Thank you.
The 144th Street Lift Station, we've been talking about this. We've looked back, it's been like since 2013. This project's been in the works. When I first got here, it had a little bit different scope. Originally, it was going to bring up Forest Oaks and then because some capacity issues in the lines that we were dumping 144th Street into, we had to redesign the whole thing. So now we got the West Bypass. But it's going to move, it's going to happen. So with this project, we'll be able to decommission the Hills of Shannon Pump Station. That lift station is over capacity and I'll use this a few times, it's functionally obsolete. It's old, it's requiring a lot of maintenance. And if that lift station were to go down and we couldn't get it repaired immediately, all that sewage starts backing up, so. And it will give us capacity for Forest Oaks, 144th Street. So we'll be able to do that and we'll be able to expand any, any growth to the southern part of the community for wastewater. Stonebridge Lift Station, again, this is for capacity improvements and system integrity. Again, the Stonebridge Lift Station is at capacity. It will give us the opportunity to decommission some other lift stations like the daycare lift station. It's functionally obsolete as well. It's old, it's requiring a lot of maintenance. You know, if we don't rebuild it and make it, expand the capacity, we're going to end up having problems there as well. The river crossing, I'm surprised this hasn't been done sooner with only one eight-inch main across the river feeding North Lawrence. Or North Lawrence. I had the same issue in Lawrence, that's why. Northern parts of Smithville. This is really important, getting this 12-inch line across there so we can continue. It's for reliability and it will open up some capacity issues for across the river. Smith Fork Forest Main, when we put the new raw water pump station in, we found out we had some restrictions in the four-inch line that comes across the river. We will put in a six-inch line, so we'll have some increased capacity. But this is a reliability project as well. One of the bigger projects for residential development up in North Smithville is the Owens Branch Gravity Line. That's a multi-phase project that we have it broke down into three phases right now for sanitary sewer. It's a gravity main, there's an existing forest main, but it's at capacity. As Jack's mentioned before and everything else, we basically are at our limits for residential capacity until we start doing some improvements like that. The wastewater treatment facility plan, we've started that. HDR is working on that, that's going to help identify our visiting plant systems and preliminary design for DNR permitting process. And our water treatment plant improvements, they're currently under construction. This is a long overdue maintenance project. We're replacing carbon feeders and lime feeders, we're replacing filter media, we're doing a lot of work in the piping gallery where we have a lot of valves that are deteriorating. The piping is pretty thin in some spots, so we're replacing some of that. So this was really needed. The Smith Fork, okay, water line. Basically, that is to replace the line that feeds the campgrounds and the sports fields down there. And it will set us up for when we do the major park improvements at that, in the future. The Highway 92 and Commercial Street Water Line is just needed to ensure that we have adequate water pressure and water supply to the South Booster Station. One of the goals of the wastewater master plan was to reduce the number of lift stations in town. With 144th Street, we'll be able to reduce the McDonald's and Central Bank Lift Station. We'll take that out and convert that to gravity. And the daycare lift station, when Stonebridge goes in, we'll be able to take that out and reduce that, or change, switch that over to gravity. And the water line from the tower to the major mall, basically that's going to help with growth south, help us get more water to the Southwest Tower. And I think a few of you might be aware, we've had some issues with fire flows out at Barton Heights. So we'll be able to put fire hydrants out there. And right now, they're on an old county, I think it's a three-inch line. This will be an eight-inch line that will extend out through there and then they'll be able to put some fire hydrants on it. And then the two big projects, the water plant expansion and the wastewater plant expansion. The water plant expansion, both of those projects are going to depend on growth of the community. With the water plant expansion, we're also going to look at taste and odor. Not included in this list of projects is what we discussed a couple meetings ago about sampling at the lake for taste and odor. Right now, I'm working with HDR to develop a scope, what we need to be testing and how long we need to be testing and how we get those results and stuff. And then we'll bring that back to the Board for, after we see what the results are and analysis and provide the Board with those results, some possible treatment options and the schedule. So we'll see if there's something intermediate that we can do or if we need to wait until we build the new plant. Finally, I guess another project that I need to bring up that's not on here, that we started thinking about, is replacement of the water line on Church and Mill. The existing main is an old cast iron main, it's had a few breaks. And we're discussing and looking at options to replace this line before those improvements get completed because we don't want to have, you know, in that area. It'd be terrible to have those improvements all done and then we're going to have to tear it all up if we have some really bad problems with those, that water line. So we're looking at that. So these are the main projects that we've planned, the larger CIP projects that we've planned for the next few years. And if you have any questions, I could sure answer them.
I have a question, Chuck. So the, the plan is to, let me get this straight here, is to have, spend 1.4 in water treatment plant improvements and then we want to build a new water treatment plant, so, or expand on it. I guess the question is, that 1.4, that's just immediate needs and is that going to be, are we going to have to redo that again when we do the water plant?
When we do the plant expansion, we, we won't waste, I call it that, we won't be wasting these improvements. We're adding capacity and we'll do some other rehabilitation of the old plant, but we're also going to add capacity. So there'll be a new portion that will be built, but we'll have to continue to maintain that plant and we will upgrade what we didn't, don't get done now in that plan.
Okay. So it's really, it'd really be like a 16.5, I mean, if you add that, right? Expansion, okay. Thank you.
If you'll recall, the water treatment plant is old and there haven't been significant upgrades and I think you've been out there and you've seen, so some of these improvements are down in the pump rooms where it needs maintenance. We've not invested in that infrastructure and so these are improvements that are needed now to hold us through. They will not be repeated or torn out or anything like that. So they might be expanded upon as we expand the new.
You know, when you do that, you always, I'm not going to say every bolt is going to be safe, every valve is going to be safe, but we're not going to wholesale, it's not going to be wasted. Obviously, the carbon and lime feeders will be reused, the filter media is new. You know, depending on how we need to restructure the piping with the expansion, some of that stuff may get pulled out, but some of it has to be replaced. We got some valves down there that we can't even turn on or close if we needed to. So, you know, you shut, you shut half the plant down because one filter is bad and you can't do that. You got to have a lot of flexibility with that plant. So if you have a problem, you can shut just the problem off, fix it and the rest of the plant be running. Right now, we, we shut off a mud valve, we have to shut down three filters. Well, that's half the plant and we can't do that just for one valve. We should be able to shut one valve, one filter, so we should be able to isolate that stuff.
Okay, and with the, another question with the work that HDR is doing now as far as updates to water treatment, I guess, as required, is that going to make any changes to this? I mean, we're going to have to add a new something or other to, you know, because of this, to add treatment or whatever? I don't know.
Are you talking about water or wastewater side?
On the water side.
Okay, and so what was the question?
If, on the, on the, the stuff they're doing now, HDR, as far as looking at the laws that are changing and making sure that we are up to the requirements with EPA, et cetera, are we going to need to add anything to the water facility because of that? I mean, something to, I don't know what it would be Chuck, but something that, you know, else that would be required because of the, the study or the manual that they're preparing?
Right now, more so probably on the wastewater side than the water side. On the water side, we'll probably look at taste and odor and see what processes or systems we need to add to control the taste and odor better. On the wastewater side, there's phosphorus and ammonia and.
PFAS and a few others coming.
Yeah, those things that will probably need to be addressed. And that's what they're looking at with, right now, when they're looking at the plant facility and the facility plan, what's coming down the pike and what are we going to have to do? So they're looking at that with the wastewater treatment plant, facility plan. But I don't know of anything new that's coming down on water treatment. We had the whole lead and copper thing that we, everybody got stuck with. Last, well, last couple of years, we did all that in-house. So there, you know, it's not that there's not things that are going to happen, but at this point, we don't know any processes that are going to change.
Okay, thank you. On the wastewater side, is that included too as far as, have you included the, you know, the need to add? Do you know what I mean, because of their study?
That's what the study will tell us.
Okay, okay, so, okay, okay, thank you.
That's what they're looking at. We did a whole comprehensive set of testing, August through October, and we were just getting the results in December. Our permit was due in January and all this gets looked at as far as what the new regulations coming down, the pike are going to be, what the new permit regulations or requirements are going to be. So they're looking at that now, but that's on the wastewater side.
Okay, thank you.
Has our flushable wipe issue been reduced any, are we still worried about that stuff breaking?
No, the flushable wipe stuff still exists.
We're not, we're not getting more out of it with, are we getting more out with the bar screen?
But the bar screen is doing great. It didn't freeze this year and so you guys have all seen the bar screen. It was more of an exposed unit and now it's an enclosed unit. They didn't realize during this last cold spell that the fuse had blown and the heater wasn't on, but it still didn't freeze. So it's doing a great job. They figured that out and they got hooked the fuse and heat and everything, but now they may not need it. So it's doing a good job and the, let's see, I think the only issue, I mean, we still have the disposable wipe thing. We're still going to have to do some of that cleaning with Ace. We're going to have to pull the influent pumps out of the main wet well there as it comes into the plant, clean that out. But we're not having the problems that we've had. We're getting a lot of that stuff out and then next, next week, no, the 20th, the 18th, we'll be coming to you guys with some new equipment called wet well wizards, degreasers that you put in lift stations. That, right now, what we do is we take gallons of Dawn dish soap and dump it in these lift stations to break the grease. These wet well wizards basically keep the stuff moving and keep it aerated and stuff and it doesn't let it solidify. So we'll be coming to you guys with some purchasing request for that. But it was in the budget and they're only $6,000 per lift station, so.
Yeah, and if you don't know what Chuck's talking about, take some baking grease and put it in a bucket with some wet wipes and see what it turns into. It makes a nice good brick.
But question on the Church and Mill, you said you're getting, that's out for bid right now or getting, no?
We are looking, we just, you know, hindsight's 20/20. And, you know, you see dirt moving and you think, oh, what should, what should we be looking at? Oh, maybe that water line.
Do you think that's going to move up highly, like move up the list of need to get done? Okay.
I hope they're going to open up the road for other, for connections.
Okay, that's true. I hope that gets bumped.
And I think we got to redo some sidewalks and stuff like that. So, you know, we're going to, we'll work with the development to make sure that, what we don't want to do is just tear things out after it's done.
Yeah, there's a spire ran a line down Mill whenever we were doing streetscape, so it's been open recently. But do we have any other major areas that have CAS still downtown or we replaced a lot of them?
Yeah, there's still a lot.
Fun times.
Okay, thank you.
Rick will take you through the financing pieces or the costs.
Perfect. This projected cash flow begins our conversation of financing our projected project cost. I am going to briefly touch base on the revenue and expense lines and then I'm going to turn it over to Todd to talk a little bit about debt and then I'll wrap this up after Todd is finished and incorporate the debt issuance line that you see in this cash flow. Looking at the revenue, we have projected an annual increase just in organic growth as well as usage and possible rate increases. Those are very conservative numbers that were thrown in there, but we definitely think those revenue can be hit on those annual basis going forward. Skipping the debt issuance and looking at the expense side, we have, I incorporated an annual operational inflation number. I'm including current as well as future debt payments based on the green line and when the debt would be issued. And also I'm including the major projected, project cost. You can see that on that last line there, starting with $4,210,000. Those, right now, this is the current cost of what Chuck just went through. All those numbers are incorporated in that expense line. You'll be able to see that as the years progress, usually between eight and as we get closer to 2033, that operational cost increases to just under about $11 million without those projects. So there's kind of a, some history there as well as some projections on what our costs would be. So everything, including the debt issuance, would be included in that expense line. At this point, I'm going to turn this over to Todd and he has another quick presentation on debt and then I will wrap it up after Todd is completed.
Yeah, thank you, Rick. I can, are you going to, I can share my screen if that's, if I'm able to do that? Oh, you're going to do that, okay.
We got it.
Perfect.
That's the last slide you need to, yeah, there you go.
Go to the first slide. So we're going to kind of just go through an overview and actually this is in a rough format, a presentation that we provided at the Missouri Municipal League Conference when it was in Kansas City two years ago. So we'll, we'll just kind of go through some of these slides and then if, if we have questions, feel free to, to ask those along the way. But I think starting out at a high level and then we'll get into a little bit of the details, nothing too, too onerous, but, you know, kind of starting out here is why issue bonds? And as Rick and Chuck have indicated, one of the, the most common reasons why we see cities issue bonds is for construction of new projects. But there are other times when a city will issue bonds such as for refinancing of a prior issue. Maybe there needs to be a restructuring or perhaps interest rates are lower and so it's much like refinancing a home mortgage where you can lower your, your interest cost. The other type of financing that we see from time to time is more of a temporary financing. And this would be done in instances where you want to move forward with a project, but perhaps the grant funding isn't available for another year. So you in essence borrow for that and then when the grant funding comes in, you would pay that back. Not something we see a lot of, but those are really the three primary reasons why we would see cities go out to the market and, and issue some type of bonds. With that, we'll move on to the next slide that really shows the three primary types of bonds that are issued. And, you know, these terms may be familiar to many of you and the city does have some of these types outstanding. So the first issue is the issuance of general obligation bonds. The city does have some outstanding GO bonds. I think the mayor mentioned the Streetscape project and that's, that's how that project was financed, was with general obligation bonds. We also will use certificates of participation. Again, the city has issued those in the past for utility improvements. And then the third type is revenue bonds. And so we're going to talk a little more detail on, on each of, of these three types. General obligation bonds are a, what I call a full faith and credit obligation, meaning that the city's taxing power is available. You have the, not only the, the right to impose a tax levy, but you have an obligation to impose a tax levy at whatever amount is needed in order to make the payment on the general obligation bond. So it's the safest of, of all the bonds and, and because it's the safest, that's why it also generates the lowest interest rate, the lowest borrowing cost for a city is with a general. for a city uh, is with a general obligation bond. And in Smithville's instance, uh, some of you may recall, we did go through a rating process and a standard and poorers assigned a double A minus bond rating uh, to the city's general obligation bonds. And so that's a very, very good rating. It have, you have an A category, a double A category, and then a triple A category. And so you're kind of uh, in that double A category, uh, which is very good position to be in. Uh, GO bonds, as you may recall, uh, do require a vote of the people. And depending upon the election date, it takes a super majority. So it could be either four sevenths, which is fifty seven point one percent, or a two thirds majority. And obviously, what we always try to target there is the lower voter majority requirement, if at all possible. Uh, GO bonds are subject to uh, a constitutional debt limit of twenty percent of your assessed valuation. Uh, and then also, and, and Megan can certainly chime in here, uh, but uh, under state law, the maximum amortization period for GO bonds is twenty years. So um, that's kind of a brief summary of the general obligation bonds. So I'm maybe pause there and see if there's any questions and we'll move on to uh, kind of an overview of COPs. So uh, hearing us, so with certificates of participation, um, that if you think of lease purchase financing, uh, certificates of participation, or what we sometimes will call COPs or COPS, uh, those are all names that are used kind of interchangeably. And the, the one key point behind a COP is that it does not require voter approval. The board has the ability to go out and issue COPs for any municipal purpose that you would so choose. Uh, and, and how you're able to avoid an election of, of, of the voters is that it's subject to an annual appropriation on behalf of the board each and every year. And, and that's kind of the key. The key part of a COP is it has to be subject to annual appropriation because without a vote, it's not legally considered debt under Missouri law. Uh, typically with a COP, the project that's being financed, uh, whether that's um, it could, in some instances, it could be a, a equipment. Other times it might be facilities or treatment plan improvements, those types of things, but that actually serves as the, as the security. Because it has an annual appropriation pledge on a year-to-year basis, the COPs have a rating that is generally always at least one notch lower than your GO bond rating and in some instances could be a couple of notches lower. So uh, definitely looking at a, at a higher, a slightly higher borrowing cost uh, with COPs versus the general obligation bonds. Uh, I mentioned uh, on GO bonds that you have a, a statutory uh, or a constitutional debt capacity limit that does not apply to COPs. So we don't have to be concerned with that. And then with GO bonds, I mentioned you have a twenty-year amortization limitation. And with COPs, that limitation also does not apply. So you know, we would typically see uh, many times uh, beyond twenty years, it could be twenty-five or thirty years. Rarely would we see uh, an issue go out longer than thirty years. And I would say most of the cities that, that do these types of COP issues, uh, I would say ninety-five percent of them are in the twenty to twenty-five year range. Uh, the, the last item on that, the last bullet point there, uh, you know, as I mentioned, there is no vote and it's subject to an annual appropriation pledge of the city. The big question here is where's the money gonna come from to make that payment? And uh, it could be sales tax revenues that are gonna be used. It could be water sewer revenues that are going to be used. It could be other general fund monies or park fund monies that have been identified, but the COP does not provide you the ability to impose any type of a tax levy specifically for the payment of the COPs. It has to come from within your budget and from available revenues that, that you might have. And, and COPs, that's, that would be exactly like what you've issued a few years ago. Um, and you currently have outstanding. So that is something that Smithville has done in the past. The, the final item uh, are utility revenue bonds and, and we mainly see these for water and sewer projects. There are some cities out there that, that have electric systems. And so in those instances, those cities would have the ability to, to vote and issue electric revenue bonds, but mostly what we see are water and sewer revenue bonds. Uh, unlike GO bonds that require that super majority uh, election, revenue bonds can be voted by a simple majority. So just fifty percent plus one. So it's a little bit lower voter requirement to get revenue bonds approved. And it, it also uh, does not count against your constitutional debt limit. And it also is not restricted to twenty years. And, and many times we'll see twenty, twenty-five or thirty-year amortizations because with these water and sewer improvements, a lot of these have very long lives. Uh, and will be, you know, in the ground or operational for many, many years. And, and so it, it's uh, not at all uncommon to see a financing of this type go beyond the twenty-year time period. When, when you vote revenue bonds, it is what Megan and I describe as a net revenue pledge. And so the, it's solely the, the revenues, the net revenues of the water and sewer system are legally pledged to the payment of the bond. So it's not, it's apart from the general fund or any other fund. It's uh, specifically from the operation of your water and sewer system. And, and the way it works is the, the first expenses that you pay out of your water and sewer revenues are operating cost. And then after those operating costs are paid, then those remaining revenues or what we describe as net revenues, those are the revenues that then become pledged to the payment of, of the water and sewer revenue bonds. Um, and then as, as mentioned there on the next to last bullet point, the, the revenue bonds are paid from, from user fee. So it's not, it's not a property tax uh, or any type of a tax. It's considered a user fee, not a tax. And then I think the last slide is, is a kind of a variation of revenue bonds. And under, under Missouri, uh, the state of Missouri, the Department of Revenue, they have a, what's called a state revolving fund program. Uh, we refer to this as if for short for SRF. And this is a program that's been around since the early nineties and has kind of evolved over time. But it's a low-interest loan program that provides you about a sixty percent reduction uh, in interest rate borrowing cost from the current market. And so in, in today, if you're going through an SRF financing, you would be able to lock in a twenty-year interest rate at around one point eight, one point eight five percent, something just a little under two percent. So very, very uh, low cost of funds uh, going through DNR. And then as you can imagine, uh, with, with the state of Missouri and, and federal dollars involved, there's, there's a detailed process that you have to go through uh, for an application. There's a due diligence questionnaire that gets completed. There's a lot of details that we're certainly not gonna cover here tonight. But, but ultimately, what happens is your project uh, gets, it goes before either the Clean Water Commission for a sewer project or the Drinking Water Commission for a, a water project. And then those two uh, bodies uh, approve and distribute what's called an intended use plan. And at the point you get on the intended use plan, and if you have revenue bonds voted and approved, then that's the point at which you can move forward with the SRF program and get that low-interest uh, loan. So I kinda went through these pretty quickly, but I, I think bringing it back to the projects that that Chuck described and, and going through the cash flows uh, that Rick did a good job with. What we're discussing here really is you utilizing COPs uh, here for some of these initial projects that have been underway for a while. And then uh, the cash flows that Rick put together really contemplates uh, the use of revenue bonds uh, down the road, which would require voter approval at, at that point. So I'm gonna, I'll stop there. I, I know I said a lot uh, and went through that rather quickly, but um, we'll just kinda see what questions you might have at this point.
I know Melissa's not here because she is sick for those wondering. The last time we, the board voted to issue debt was prior to everyone other than Melissa, uh, Cynthia included. We had COPs from twenty eighteen that were refinanced and then some stuff for the interceptors. And then the GO bonds were twenty eighteen also voted by the voters the day I was elected and Marv and some others. So it's been a long time since we've gone out for debt. So if that was a lot to handle, that's why we haven't done this in a long time. So.
And Mayor, I might indicate also, and, and Rick kinda talked about this a little bit. I'm hinted at it earlier as well. We have not issued debt since, before I started here. We've talked for quite some time about issuance of COPs for the hundred forty-fourth street station um, or lift station project. Um, we've been able to push out the debt financing because we've secured alternative funding. The project has changed in scope. We've had a lot of changes, but we had anticipated. I think if you go back to FY twenty-one, we were talking, we were seeing cash flow starting to dip because we were anticipating this project and we had started talking about COPs. We wanna make sure we were bringing that up again. Um, and having Todd clearly outline to the governing body, the different types of financing options. Because we're getting closer to the need now, we will, as Chuck mentioned earlier, we finally bid the project. We have those costs. We're ready to move forward with that. We will need to ensure that we have the funding in place for that to move forward with other projects in that fund. So this is also something we'll be talking about over, over the course of the next several months as well, but we'll need direction. Rick is gonna go back to the financial information here, outline what um, Todd had talked about, kind of a plan that we've developed for a combination of use of COPs as well as revenue bonds that would require voter approval. But these are processes that we're gonna have to talk out over, talk about over time. Um, we want your all's feedback once we present this information. And then once we have that direction, that will help us proceed. There are steps we'll have to take in issuance of those different types of debts. So we'll need to be discussing those over time. So we wanna make sure you all understand what we're looking at. And this is debt to, to fund the projects that are needed for, for the utility over the coming eight to ten years. So I'm gonna turn it back to Rick.
Oh, one second before Rick starts, just so folks know, uh, Jack Forrest Oaks is twenty-some years old, thirty?
Yeah, it was ninety-three, I think.
And when that was built, the intent was eventually that would connect into our sewer system or we would be able to develop the south end with Kansas City's sewer plant that that plugs into, right?
Yeah, the, the original intent was to use Kansas City's, but before Forrest Oaks was even built out, Kansas City said, nope, no more, we're done.
So then we started the process of getting Forrest Oaks connected into our system and found out we needed capacity at a hundred and forty-fourth. It has nothing to do with the commercial development that's going on today.
Oh, gosh, no. We've been working on this since twenty thirteen. That's when we first put HDR under contract to start the location and evaluation of the, and design of the project.
Right. And then the, the gravity system Chuck refers to, for those of you that aren't aware, we have thirty-three-ish pump stations that cost us a lot of money to operate, probably close to half a million dollars a year between electricity, maintenance, all those things. So as we remove pump stations, we save money getting it to gravity, cause when it flows downhill, it's a lot cheaper than pumping it.
Yes, and don't forget, a lot of these pump stations are small and they're old and um, we're having to put a lot of time and effort into them every week.
So the gravity we're growing from the plant out, our subdivisions went from the furthest reaches of the city in.
Yeah, over the hills and under and over.
So typically your sewer from Harbor Lakes is about four miles to the plant? Five miles?
Yeah.
Yeah, for two hundred houses. Similar to Harborview and others too. We're pumping a lot of hills because we don't have bin fill, which the gravity helps us eliminate, right? Cool. So we're on the same page talking about it. By the way, for those of you don't know, we canceled the meeting because this room was full of sewer last week too, because we had a little backup.
That was a building specific issue. It had nothing to do with the citywide system.
Well, there's no, there's, there's no uh, fall from our bathrooms to the mains, so you know.
And as we move through the budget process, you'll be seeing some additional discussion on that.
Digging, digging holes deep was hard back then.
Much like a lot of service lines, we, I've had this conversation with a few of the board members. We all have sewer line issues at our homes and we had a sewer line issue at City Hall. It had nothing to do with the city's lines or other, this was internal to City Hall, but you did not want to be here last week. It was lack. Very, yeah, it was lack of gravity.
But that, that, that's part of the reason Chuck, right? Because gravity, you have to go deep. Pump stations, you don't. So people weren't digging deep. We're going shallow and pumping it instead of digging deep holes. That's why these deep holes are expensive. Yeah, no, we had to go what, thirty feet deep at the plant? And there's a river right there that we had to de-water. Anyway, let's, I'm talking about sewer. Might as well catch everybody up. Huh? Yeah, we gotta go under the river. So there's water there and it fills the hole up when you're digging it. Yeah, if you played in a sandbox with water and you're digging a hole, it keeps coming and filling back up, so.
Hey, Rick, I have, I have a couple of questions for um, Todd before you start, if you don't mind. Todd, are you still there?
Yes, I am.
Uh, just a couple of quick questions for you. Um, uh, this is Alderman Russell. On, on the utility revenue bonds, are they the same rate as the GO bonds?
They on a conventional issuance are probably a little bit higher than GO bonds, but not quite as high as certificates of participation.
Okay, thank you. And uh, on the SRF uh, funds, the process, is it, you start the process and then get photo approval? And if so, how does that affect the uh, the debt, the amount of debt issuance?
What was that?
When you start, so do you go start the process with the DNR before you get voter approval?
D, DNR permitting is our sewer and things like that. We, we have to get it anyway before we do design.
No, the SRF is, is through DNR.
Oh, you're talking about the revolving fund?
You're talking about the revolving fund, right?
Right. So do you, do you have to get vote, you start the process? And the way I wrote it down, maybe backwards, but you start the process and get some type of approval in there and then you go to the voter for approval again, or just give voter approval and then?
Todd, I'm gonna make sure that.
Yeah, I'd say Todd, in this instance, DNR is essentially the bank or the bondholder. So we still have to get voter approval prior to going to the bank.
Okay. And then how, if that's the case, then how does that affect the bond issuance? So if you get, if you get voter approval and then you get approved at a lower rate through the, by going through the DNR, how does it affect the uh, the bond issuance? I mean, did you see what I'm saying? Does that make sense?
Yeah, really what, what happens? Yeah, really what, what happens there is that, you know, we've got the ability to start the process without, with S R F, with completing an application and some early information. And then it will take them up to a year to go through the process with the Clean Water and Drinking Water Commissions to get on to the intended use plan. And then kind of in, in the interim, you know, you'd have the ability to schedule a bond election that would fit with your priorities. It's not something that you got to rush right out and do in a couple of months, but it's something you'd want to get scheduled within probably 12 to 18 months. And then in terms of the, if I understood the question correctly, the issuance of the bonds, you're in essence just issuing your bonds to the state of Missouri. So instead of going out and selling bonds in the open market, you're just simply selling those bonds to the state of Missouri.
And, and the, the election question is always for an amount. It's not a rate or anything else. It's, we're going to ask the voters for $20 million, they say yes or no. Yeah, that. How, how we issue that or how we finance that, that's Todd and Megan's wheelhouse.
Okay, that, that's, that's what I was asking. So if you ask for 20 million, 1% is different than 20 million, 5%, you know what I mean? So it doesn't matter as far as the voting.
No, they give us authority to bond it. The, yeah.
Yeah. And so the, the mayor is correct. Whenever we write the ballot question, the ballot question specifies obviously like what type of bond. So if you're, if you were doing a G O question, right, you would, it was for general obligation bonds or for revenue issue, like in this instance, it would be for, you know, utility or excuse me, water and wastewater revenue bonds. And then, yeah, it's for an amount. So you, you go up for a par amount, right? You don't, the rate is not within the ballot question itself. And so then once that question, if and when it does pass and you have that voted authority for that amount that you could issue at any time. Now, if, for example, if you had a ballot question for $10 million worth of bond, you know, you could issue all 10 million in one go-round. You could issue 5 million and 5 million or, you know, any iteration. But yeah, it's for, it's for a principal amount.
And, and in 18, Jack, Jack can vouch for me on this, they didn't really think it was going to pass. So we didn't have solid plans for downtown completely done. They'd been talking about it since 16, but they didn't have finalized, approved engineered drawings for downtown. We were still having meetings when Cynthia and I were here about what railings and what curbs and what light poles were going in. So we issued a small amount first. We had the authority for over $5 million. We issued the first amount for the first part of construction because you can't have the money sitting in the bank. You have to spend it within a certain amount of time. And then when we were closer to, hey, we're under construction, we need the money, then we go issue the rest of it. So even if you're in the middle of doing a plan with H D R for engineering, we don't, we get the authority to get the debt. Doesn't mean we go and grab the money right away. We don't always have to grab all of it.
Well, that's a perfect example also because we do, we are limited in the amount of time we have to spend the money. So if we get authorization to do $10 million, we may do it. And the plan outlines multiple issuances because we need to space that out because of completing those projects in a timely manner.
That Cynthia is correct. The I R S has very specific rules that at, once you issue an amount, you want to be able to spend 80% of that within three years. You have to have, you know, the reasonable expectation that you're going to spend 80% in three years.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all.
And that's part of why, right now, knowing that we've got $70 million worth of needs and, and Rick's going to go into kind of talking about that, the, the financing piece of it. That's why we're bringing that to you now, so that we can begin planning. And we have a reasoned approach to why we're recommending C I Ps when we are and why we're recommending other funding sources to allow that voter input. So this is, this plan takes all of those moving parts into consideration. It's a lot, we know. And so we want to make sure we get it out here now and we'll have continuing discussion on this. But we really need to make sure we focus particularly on that first, first round of funding because that's going to fund the projects we're doing now.
Rick Sawyers.
All right. Thank you, Todd. After discussions with the city's financial advisor and bond counsel, we have come up with the following timeline of debt issuance as, as been projected for these projects. If you look at the first year, which is 2025, we would plan on issuing C O P at 7 million. And then skip a year and go to 27 and do 8 million for C O P as well. Also, within the next few board meetings, we will be bringing forward a reimbursement resolution. So once we issue some of these C O Ps, we could reimburse ourselves for some of these bigger projects that we've started here in 2020, 2025. So that'll be coming forward here in the next couple of board meetings. We just kind of went over the process of doing a lot of these debt issuance. So to get the debt issuance going, the C O Ps, we've identified as the best route in the beginning. We will, we will probably begin an application for the state revolving fund loan. Like it's been alluded to already, that is, that can be a lengthy process depending on timing. Takes quite a bit of time, takes quite a bit of documents to have ready to present to the state. The state may only look at this, I believe, one time in March or April. And based on the timing of submitting it, depends if you wait another year. So that is why we have debt issuance under the, the revenue bonds, starting in 2029. And then a total of those bonds for C O P, we anticipate 15 million and then 38 million for the revenue bonds. And again, this is today's numbers. We, like Chuck said, early on, we are meeting, me and him, on a monthly basis. Sometimes, sometimes less in a couple of weeks. Numbers are changing, projects are getting reprioritized. So we're just making sure we're using, we'll be using the funds appropriately. And like I mentioned before, when we talked about the expenses, all the debt issuance cost is rolled up into that expense line. So we, and I actually, when I did the debt issuance cost, my percentage rate is very conservative. He rattled off around 2%, maybe a little less. I have a little more than 2% typed into these, just not knowing what the market would be in the next couple of years. So. Have any questions on the cash flow?
I do want to highlight this, I know this is a lot of information. What we're looking for tonight from you all is general direction to move forward as recommended. If that's something that you all want us to be able to proceed with, we'll provide additional information as we come forward, including the fact that if we do look at issuance of $7 million in C O Ps this year, Rick mentioned the reimbursement resolution. We also would have to go through internally some processes to make that happen. There would be bond rating calls, there would be preparation for that, there's document preparation. So we need lead time on issuing that debt so we could put together that timeline and schedule to get to you all so that you knew what we were, were doing there as well. Much of that is administratively and internal. We've not gone through it since 2019. I think we did sell bonds in 20 or 21 also, as, as we'd noted. But that's kind of what we would look at as far as that process.
I mean, the, the only question, and again, it's not for here, it'll be later on, is where the revenue stream will come from, from the, the C O Ps issued twice. But even once we get through that, the, of course, you know, when you go out farther here in 20, starting in 2030, it's, it's when it looks a little rocky, right? I mean, for as far as, as far as the end cash that we have on hand with, with high debt and low cash, right? Is what we'll be looking at at that time.
And Alderman Russell, that's one of the things that we would talk about as we move through. We want to talk about our, our utility rate study and, because rates are what support this. And we recognize that we have done significant increases over the last several years. This is a lot of investment. We also, as development occurs, we have impact fees from developers that help offset the costs of some of those projects. And as we have more users, that's more rate payers that are paying into the fund. So those are things we'll be bringing forward. The revenue line outlined, those estimates right now are just that estimates, but we need to spend some time looking at this, making projections and having discussion with you all on that that helps us move through. I know that those negative numbers in the out years are daunting. If you look back the last several budgets, we've had similarly daunting, not quite as big as this because our, our projects are bigger now because we're looking at. But if you'll recall, we, we've seen negative numbers for a while. We've done better, so we continue to move through there. And so this is a process that will just continue. But we do recognize, and, and like I had mentioned earlier, one of the things we want to bring you also for context is expenditures and investment in the system over the last several decades, back to like 2020, and rate increases. So you can see where we've not had rate increases and we've not made investments in the system. And now we have to, we're going to have to be looking at that. So that's the next step of the project. We have a number of discussions planned for the next several weeks for you all.
Well, and additionally, this is what the board asked Chuck and Rick to bring forward to us of, give us what it costs to improve taste, odor and the other concerns. And this is not C O P and the, and these revenue bonds are going to the voters. So if the voters say they don't want to pay for taste and odor improvements, then they don't pay for it then. And it doesn't happen. So the things in 29, 30, 31, those are up to the voters and that's where we're going to put it. Any other questions for Chuck or Rick? I recommend we postpone the item number three till next, but next week because we don't have much on the work session. We can do budget review then. Linda, do you need a vote to postpone it since this is work session or? Okay, we'll postpone item number three because there's quite a few people here for the regular session. So we don't want to keep them here too much longer than they have to. And with that, I'll go to number four.
Mayor, if I may, I just want to confirm, do we have concurrence with the board to move forward the way that we've outlined? I see nodding of heads. So, okay. I just want to make sure that we're all good with that. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Well, I will take a motion to adjourn the work session.
May I make a motion to adjourn?
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor during any work sessions, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Thanks, Todd. Thanks, Megan. Thanks to everybody for joining online. Well, do you need to restart the Zoom?
Bye, everybody.
Give us a minute to restart the.
Thank you, Megan.
Stop the recording, start the new one, and then we'll get started on the regular session.